Hey, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the flag of allegiance, please. Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the faithful liberty and justice of our all. Okay, welcome everyone to the February 21st meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th meeting?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, we have a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We've got a budget amendment, 2024-03, is that, you got that Steve?
Yes, I do. The Department of Public Works under the sewer fund is looking to transfer $8,900 from their repairs and maintenance account into their capital account for the purpose of purchasing a new half-yard loader bucket. I guess the last one was beyond the repairs and maybe combined with one for $8,900.
Very good, do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2024-03?
Some.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion on that capital purchase of $8,900? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, up next we have the introduction, I want to introduce Maryland Water, Maryland American Water, I guess, right? And I'm gonna let you introduce your team and we're gonna do a little presentation, if it's okay with you, I wanted to let the board know that I met with American Water at the MML conference last year, I got to meet with Mr. Walker there and we were able to hit off a pretty good relationship and I think it's very important for all municipalities, including the town of Elton, to see options that are out there for us. And these guys do a great job over in Harper County, I don't believe that you've snuck over Cecil County yet, but I'd love to listen and I wanted to bring the board up to date with exactly what we have here, so the floor's gone to yours and...
Michelle, how do I need to...
I've got, I've given you permission to share your screen.
Okay.
And if you look, there should be an option for you to share your screen. If you hit that, we cross our fingers and...
So I'll go ahead and get started while he's getting that up and going. Mayor, Councilman, Commissioner, I guess, Administration. We really do appreciate the opportunity to come here and visit with you, I haven't gotten to meet with you yet, I am Barry Suits, I'm President of Maryland American Water. We're gonna, you know, kind of go through a little bit about mostly who we are, what we do, how we do it, you know, we're gonna spend a few minutes introducing ourselves and I think that's important, I think that's one of the things I'm most proud of as a team I have with me, you'll find that the folks I had with me, including myself, were not salespeople, were people that really run the water and wastewater business where we located in Virginia and Maryland. So the team we have here is our leadership team that covers both states as well as our local ops needs from Maryland. And I'll start with myself, so I came out here from Illinois American Water, we're part of American Water, which is a national water and wastewater utility. I was Vice President of Operations in Illinois and was in the engineering department before that, I got my civil engineering degree way back when. And then moved into operations in 1999, so I've been with the company 30 years, have been out here eight years as President of Virginia and Maryland American Water and the team of people we have here are really assembled to talk a little bit about what they do, but moreover, answer any questions you have, they're kind of the knowledge and experts that we have and I'm very proud of them. So that's a little bit about me and I'll turn it over to Charlie to introduce himself and we'll just go through our team.
Yep.
Beyond that, we'll cover the slides.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thanks, let's step up here. Trying to not have it back from here. Name is Charlie Pecansy, I'm the Vice President of Operations for Maryland and Virginia. Been with American Water for 19 years, but I've been in the water and wastewater industry for a little over 29 years, doesn't seem time flies when you're having fun. Started my career out at, in a big industry called Procter and Gamble Paper Products. I was born and raised in northeast Pennsylvania, a large paper mill, the largest paper mill that had in the world was there and got involved in the utility business there and then came onboard in 2005 to American Water. I started as a plant operator, worked my way up to here where I'm standing in front of you as Vice President of Operations. Have water and wastewater certifications in Virginia and Pennsylvania and looking forward to getting them in Maryland as well, so thank you.
Good morning, my name is Christian Mandy, I'm the Director of Engineering for Virginia and Maryland. I'm responsible for the capital assets that we take care of. Appreciate your motion to move PAC from OpEx, I always write my own. A little bit about myself, I've worked for American Water for 19 years, I've been in the world that I currently am for seven years. Previous 12 years I worked at the Corporate Engineering Office. My little claim to fame with American Water is that I've had an opportunity to build something in every state to be operated, so I've traveled throughout the whole business and seen all that American Water has to offer. Prior to working for American Water, I was a Lieutenant Commander in the United States Navy as a Civil Engineer Corps Officer and built assets for our company. That's a little bit about me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Christian Gold, Senior Manager of Water Quality and Operations. 26 years of experience with American Water. Started in research in Illinois and I moved to Indiana, worked in water quality, production, and moved to Virginia and worked in water quality and operations.
Hello everyone, I am Jeff Barton, I'm Operations Manager at the Bel Air facility in Maryland. I've been there 30 years, I actually started out as a meter reader in that very division. Prior, prior to that, I worked for a utility contractor right here in northeast Maryland. I was born and raised in Cecil County and I used to work for a contractor, H.I. We installed water line for Maryland American Water in the town of Elton, that's where I started. I'm also Superintendent of the Winter Run Treatment Plant, two BGE per day plant. We draw surface water and we have a couple different sources, we draw off freshwater stream, surface water, we also have an impoundment and some well sites, so thanks for having us.
Afternoon everyone, my name is Simon Scarlett and I'm the Senior Manager of Operations for North Virginia and our operations in Maryland. I've been with American Water five years, it doesn't seem like much now when I look at the amount of experience that's on the board, but primarily my background is in health, safety, and environmental management. I worked with American Water as a Safety Manager and prior to that, I worked throughout Australia and Southeast Asia on offshore oil and gas rigs for a company called Transocean. And prior to that, I was in the Australian Navy. I reached the lofty heights of Abel Seamen, which is one rank above the bottom, so Christina and I... Thank you, it's good to be here.
Thank you all for letting us be here, Dave, my name is JW Walker, believe it or not, that is actually me. I don't look like that anymore, but I've been with the company 16 years. Jeff actually hired me, I'm a local guy, I'm from born and raised, went to high school in Happy Grace. My father-in-law was the mayor in Happy Grace for eight years, so I appreciate everything you guys do. And sort of like Jeff, I started, I was hired as a backhoe operator and drew the American Water Tuition Reimbursement Program, I decided, hey, why not try college? I went, I got a Business Administration degree and I was formerly the Ops Manager in the Bel Air District and I am now Project Manager for Virginia and Maryland, so thank you for letting us be here.
And where's Mary Beth? Mary Beth is, Mary Beth couldn't make it, but she is, she is our wonderful external affairs lady and she's always helpful with everything we do.
Well, this is an awesome way to meet the average.
It is, and you know, I wanted to, as you're gonna give us your presentation, I think it's important that what my thoughts were when we met, we met at MML then we went out to lunch to talk about the whole program per se and I gave this team some of my concerns, you know, in the, in the future, and when I say the future, the future is now, we've been working on PFASs and plant hiccups, I'm gonna say, and interconnections. And I tend to believe that the future of water and wastewater, I'm not sure where it's gonna go for municipalities, that's just my blunt feeling. Everyone up here may feel a little bit differently, but I thought it was important for us to really meet with you folks to help us understand what you do and what you can do for the town of Elton.
Yeah, so I'm gonna kick off the first two slides, a little bit about American Water. I think it's just, I'm speaking. Yeah, a little bit, yeah, a little bit about American Water. In case you don't know us, we're the largest regulated water and wastewater company in the United States. You can see in the blue shaded areas, 14 states we provide regulated water services, but also 18 military installations across the United States. We have over 65, or we serve over 14 million people across the United States and we have approximately 6,500 employees with our company, so just to give you the scale of size and scale of what we can produce, or what we provide for our customers. Just another highlight, you know, we produce about a billion gallons of water treated and delivered to those 14 million customers, again, recapping 6,500 plus employees and over 7, almost 750 water and wastewater treatment plants we own and operate. And then, you know, covering around 7,000 miles of distribution and recollection systems. So just to give you a little bit about us, size and scale, thanks.
How you doing in California right now?
California.
Who asked that question, I answered it on the president.
They're having a heck of a mess out there.
They are.
Our facilities are impacted.
We are okay right now, I just talked to the President of California American yesterday on the President's Call and the locations we're at, we don't have anything impacted by it, we were talking a little bit ahead of this meeting, there are whole communities there that are moving and they're having a lot of water main breaks and even, I mean, the dramatic ones, the ones fall in the ocean are one thing, but there's others that are just moving enough where the ground is moving feet and it's breaking pipes and causing, you know, doors and structures to be unsafe that look kind of on the outside okay, so for right now, we're okay. You know, they've had a lot of challenges there and that's actually one of the things I think about American Water that in my 30 years, I love. The issue's been more there, problems with fires and problems with lack of water. So now they have the opposite problem, but what I love about American Water is when one of us needs help, the rest of us are there to help them, right? And, you know, that's, that's one of the joys of being part of such a large organization. We're really a local business backed up by what Charlie just went through, right? So when, when one of us needs something, then we can bring the kind of resources and power of the overall corporation to support, you know, what's going on in California. So that's a great question, they're okay for right now where we're at. We're spread out a little bit, we have operations in Sacramento, San Diego, LA area, but where we're at actually has not been impacted in the way you see on the news, so...
So you left out.
We have so far.
And Louis is our Town Administrator, but I will tell you that I would put anyone's knowledge of water and wastewater up against him. He's, he's our expert here and... Water's wet, I can guarantee.
It's always a good thing.
Next, next up, we're gonna give you a little bit, I think JW could advance the slide, I think it's more, more about the Virginia, or the Maryland footprint here, Jeff's our local resource here, he's gonna give you a little synopsis.
Yeah, I'll go through, again, don't sell Mary a little short on that, I think it's worth saying when we met him, he was pretty knowledgeable there, so...
I get it from the best everywhere.
Maybe, that's where we learned from over there.
So I just want to say that American Water has been in the town of Bel Air and we're getting really close to 100 years. So in 1932, North American Waterworks Corporation was bought by Northeastern Water Company. Later that company merged with American Water Company under whose supervision it still operates. So in 1948, the filter plant, the modern design was erected in Bynum Run. The Bynum Run Station helps by the increased demand of the Bel Air community. In 1954 is when we built the current plant that we're in, 1954, 55. The Bynum Well Plant and Forest Hill Wells were not adequate at the time and a new source was needed. So we went in and bought 9.5 acres of land and had the water rights to the winter run stream that we now draw off of, purchased FMBG and the filter plant as we know it still exists today. On May 1st, 1985, the company's name was officially changed to Maryland American Water Company. So a little bit about me, I mentioned I'm from Cecil County, so you know, when I look at this big, large company called American Water, I want to make it clear that it's JW from Happy Grace, Jeff from Cecil County. I mentioned I started working for a contractor and got the job with American Water. So I raise my family in Cecil County, I have four children. My children have done many things across the county, in Elton schools, through singing and dancing and sports, Eater Park, nursing homes here within the town of Elton. So it's, it's great to be from Cecil County and it is a small county, but we care about our customers and the things that we do for water and the community. And American Water supports that, which is in the later slide, how we support these communities. Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, you guys own the water system in Bel Air, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And you operate it?
All facilities in its entirety, pipes, tanks, rights to the water, application permits, and everything in between.
Is that typical?
It is typical.
And we don't in Maryland right now, but in Virginia, we provide wastewater service, where we own the water treatment plants on the wastewater side and the collector sewers and the transmissions interceptor sewers, serving Dale City, so about 75,000 people just south of our Alexandria operations, so we have two 5 million gallon a day wastewater treatment plants there that we own and operate in Virginia from a wastewater standpoint. We do water and wastewater both, not, you know, both Jeff and JW don't do wastewater in Maryland right now, but the rest of this team is involved with wastewater in Virginia as is American Water across the country, so...
Thank you.
Excuse me, may I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you may cover this in a subsequent slide, but you just said infrastructure, so all the pipes, water service, lateral sewer, collection, everything? That's something that would be maintained by your company as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Typically, the service lines and laterals are owned to the city's right-of-way line or the property line near the sidewalk, then the portion on the homeowner's property, I assume that's the way it maybe is in Elton now anyway, but...
Yes, I misreaded that.
Okay, so the part that's on the homeowner's private property is theirs, the water line or the sewer, you know, lateral coming out from the house, we pick it up at the property line.
All right, and if I jump ahead to a slide, just tell me and I'll wait, do you conduct water audits? Do you handle water audits? Are you familiar with that?
We do, so maybe one of these guys can speak more to, you know, the water, Christian probably is the one that would be the best to speak to the water audits and the INI issues that we, you know, focus on both.
That was the next question, INI.
Non-revenue water or water leaks, we audit that as well as the infiltration into the sewer, sewer lines, so...
And do you perform leak detection on your equipment?
We do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What is the norm of lost water?
I think in Maryland, you guys are at...
Right now, it's pretty low.
8.9 or something, I think we have 8.9% non-revenue water roughly in Maryland, so...
Eight, nine.
Yes. That's a number one.
I'm pretty sure it's under 10.
That's the number we want.
That's a...
It's going down, it used to be around 15%.
Yes.
And by fixing or replacing pipes, I guess your number is gonna go down. New majors as well, it's gonna help by getting the right numbers. So we went, like I said, for many years, about 15%, 14%, and now 8, 9, and it's great.
I'm pretty sure the last report I saw was under 10, I think in Virginia, we're between 12 and 13, somewhere in that range across Virginia American Waters. We're under 15% in both of our states in terms of non-revenue water.
Thank you.
Who's next, guys?
Alright, so, you know, Mayor, you sort of introduced us really well insofar as you sort of wanted to open the discussion, you know, about what the partnership with Maryland American Water would look like. And I wanted to say, sort of from the offset, that we're having these discussions with municipalities and private utility owners all the time. So what I thought I would do with my slide here is really just kind of kick off some of the high points that we generally discuss, maybe some of the concerns of council members and private utility owners, and just really get on the high points to, and then my team will go in and sort of discuss some of these a bit more detail. So economic development, you know, I think that as we have these discussions more and more, people are wondering about, you know, how partnership with Maryland American Water would impact economic development. I think you have to do a huge amount of investigation on Elton, I mean, I'm looking at the projects you have here and online, there's a lot happening at the moment when it comes to economic development. And so, you know, it's primarily, you know, when you partner with American Water, a lot of those issues when it comes to the water and wastewater, they, they go away. Insofar as, you know, a lot of developers out there that are looking to put in, you know, new homes, businesses and the like, and we have a development, development services team that actually runs that for us, so it can significantly reduce the administrative burden on the, on the community. So that's one piece of it, you know, we will have a large customer base within the state of Maryland, so when it comes to capital investments, I think you mentioned PFAS, you know, to comply with some of those new rules and regulations, it's gonna take investment. And we're at the spread, the cost of those investments across our entire customer base, which reduces the impact on your rates, so very beneficial to the town and the residents. In addition to that, you know, sort of, I get questions about revenue streams sometimes, you know, so there would be an initial influx through a purchase price of the system, but then there are ongoing revenue streams that are generated throughout that process, such as property based, oh sorry, property tax-based contributions as well, so there's a lot to digest there, but we have to answer questions on those. We do get questions sometimes about employees, you know, if the town would go down this path of working more closely with Maryland American Water, what happens to the employees? We are very, very driven to retain the employees that you have related to the water and wastewater assets of the community. There is a lot of knowledge there and we want to make sure that we utilize that. And with that, you know, generally comes a lot of benefits to the employees. We're through an acquisition at the moment in the town of Cape Charles in Virginia and the employees there received a significant raise to their wages and benefits of their benefits as well, so there's a lot there, opportunities for career advancement, JW is a perfect example of opportunities that are opened up to people that work at our company. And tuition reimbursement, we have lots of programs that help employees as they move through their career, we provide $10,000 a year for people who want to go back to school and, you know, pursue something which is of importance. Community, I'll sort of go through this relatively quickly because I think some of the others have a bit more to talk about on some of the things that we do. But I will say that we're very, very engaged in the community, we want to help to develop members of the community, we do have scholarships, internship programs, we also have customer assistance programs, people that are struggling to pay their bills, which is something that we'll cover in a little bit more detail, and access to American Water charitable foundation grants. So we've seen a lot of that in the town of Bel Air, where we've been able to provide infrastructure. Customers and safety, Christian will go into the water quality side, you know, where as far as rates go, Public Service Commission, you know, they're the ones that set rates within the state of Maryland. We do have a 24/7 customer service component of the business, so if people have any issues day or night, that is a service that is always available to people and they can call someone and speak to a subject matter expert. This is something we're really proud of, these last two points here, we've got a really exceptional record when it comes to water quality and regulatory compliance. And the last one here, you know, something that I think is, you know, often overlooked but really an achievement is, we've had no customer complaints to the Maryland PSC in the last five years. That's a, that's a really big thing for us, to speak to a lot of the level of service and quality. I will also say, you know, this top point is to talk about safety, but safety is one of our core components of our business. We are very, very driven to make sure that employees are looked after, they have the right training, tools, and equipment to do the job. So we have a State Safety Manager who is a Certified Safety Professional, primarily they're used to come out in the field, provide in-field training, mentoring, we have a very robust training system as well. Investments, I'll just go through this relatively briefly, but increase, you know, property tax base for the community, we would be able to stabilize rates for the community sustainably. Very, very focused on capital improvements that Christina will talk about in a moment, and there'll be other sources of reoccurring revenue for the community as well, as I mentioned, things such as franchise fees, permits, and the like, so I know we threw a lot there, but the rest of the team will go into those in a little bit more detail.
Any questions up for, or anyone? Alright.
Alright, our customers, so along with safety, the customers are probably the most important thing to us, we talk about service and we talk about dedication to our employees, to our customers, that's exactly what we are, you know. The, you know, when we think of customer service, what we really try to do is keep the connection between the customer and ops, you know, especially our local contact, you know, so one of the best ways we do that is through our mine water portal. And so what that does is that every customer has a login, they can log in and they can see every aspect of their account, they can see their service, they can, they can make, they can make scheduled appointments to have somebody come out if they're having a problem with their meter or service or any type of situation like that, they can go in, they can see about payment options, whether it's to extend payment plan or, or switch to auto pay or pay their bill online or mail. Also through the information in mine water, we are able to alert customers whenever we have an emergency situation, we have a water interruption, we have a main break and it's gonna affect their service through via, via text message, phone call, we can let them know what services is, you know, what the issue is, approximately how long they could expect to see any sort of issue and, and you know, a good example of that is when we're flushing in the spring and in the fall, we will send an email or text or send a phone call out a week before we're gonna be in your neighborhood. So we always want to keep that connection live and going between customer and our team here. So, you know, when I say customers, we take that very serious, you know, it's our reputation, we want to make sure that we are connecting with everyone, we want to make sure that we're providing the service that we promised to serve you guys, so that's all about customers.
One of the points I just thought would be worthy of mentioning on that as well, you know, being a large business, we have a lot of different key performance indicators, you know, when it comes to customer service, safety, operational excellence, so a lot of the things that we're talking about now, there's a lot of oversight within our organizations, non-revenue water is a perfect one, we look at that across the business, so that, you know, for people like Barry and Charlie, we're always driven to look at what's important to the business. And so when we identify an issue, we're able to address it very, very quickly, yeah.
Can I have a question on this slide?
Yes.
Oops, sorry.
No, that's...
Under our account management, why would a customer turn service off for a home? I don't, that's the only one I don't...
If they were, if they were moving, let's say they purchased another house, but they were gonna keep the house they're in, so they would schedule a form of shutdown to shut off until the new owners...
That's all that's forced to that five year...
Yeah, that could be your...
To be seen.
...
Snowbird, something on, they wanna go away the winter, something, turn it back on when they come back in the spring.
One of our challenges, I think, with that would be, could be, it may not be, but we have a lot of landlords and my concern would be, they would, they want to get that tenant out, they'll shut that water off, I guess, I don't know if that's possible or if that's what happens, I don't know.
We have a cut-in landlord piece, where if the landlord wants to keep that house, if somebody moved out and they want to leave that water on for a freezing purpose or what have you, or go to a hot water tank expansion or something, then they can assign that as cut-in landlord and then we wouldn't turn it off, the bill would refer to them automatically.
Are the tenants, the customers of the city's water and wastewater system or are the landlords receiving the bill?
Everything goes to the landlord up here. Everything goes to the landlord up here.
So everything goes to landlord here?
It goes to the landlord, but we've been, we've always been very careful about the landlords coming in and asking to have their water shut off if they're using it as a tool to get the tenant to leave.
Senator, I would say the majority of our customers that are working in a home are the customer of us, and they'd be the only ones that could initiate an order for a turn on or turn off or some other kind of service. So landlord would kind of be out, because the customer at the home living there would probably be receiving the water and wastewater bill, and they're the only ones that could ask for a change. The landlord wouldn't be able to turn them off. Does that make sense? Because the relationship would be between the person living there most likely and the company.
And the landlords, they provide the bill to the tenant, and then they'll come in and pay in most cases, right?
And the landlord is billed because if the bill is not paid, it ultimately goes to tax sale. So that's why the property owner gets their water bill.
So that is one thing that's a little different with the private ownership. In fact, in some of the communities where we have the water systems and the city has the sewer system, they work out an agreement with us to turn off water service for non-payment of sewer, as opposed to either digging up the lateral to physically disconnect the sewer or forcing a tax sale. They use turning off the water to force the payment on the sewer side. Does that make sense? That's something that is, happens in some of the communities where the sewers owned by the town and the water system is owned by us, they actually ask us to turn water service off to force the payment of the sewer bill to the city, as opposed to a tax bill. Because that's sort of tedious, right? When you get some legal fees and, yeah, it's slow and tedious.
So you would treat it as a electric bill, say with the tenant, not the property owner? So you, in fact, it's not like treated as like a utility bill, like a cable TV or electric bill or whatever?
Exactly. Exactly. I hope that helps a little bit understand how it's working. Good question, though.
Thank you.
So let's talk now a little bit about water quality, and we strive to meet all regulations, water, wastewater regulations, and we really rely on strong process control and compliance monitoring plans. So basically, we do a lot of testing. We have labs in our treatment plants, and we also have access to a central lab based in Illinois, and all the advanced testing using sophisticated equipment is going to be sent to the central lab. Our main goal is to have violations, zero violations, which mean we have an excellent relationship with the state. As far as treatment, we rely on treatment optimization. So basically, the goal is going to be to provide stable or constant treatment, so you keep your water quality stable, you avoid treatment upset. And to do this, we're going to rely on continuous water quality monitoring. So we have, we install equipment, and the equipment is going to monitor water quality all the time. We also rely on plant automation and computer control. So basically, one plant operator watching the plant from the computer and running the treatment plant from the computer as well. We use new technology, so in addition to the typical oxidation with chlorine or permanganate, we started using ultraviolet, so UV light disinfection, and we have an example here of the system, and we are currently installing a similar system in Bel Air, so to inactivate parasites. We also use advanced oxidation, it's going to be a combination of UV light and peroxide. And we have one system in Virginia, and this system we use to experience algae blooms, so your advanced oxidation is going to take care of the issues. We also rely on activated carbon, so activated carbon filtration to remove any micro pollutants. And we also focus on the safety, so we used to have a lot of chlorine gas systems, and chlorine gas works well, but it's very dangerous when you have a leak, so we are replacing chlorine gas and switching to a liquid chlorine breach. So looking at all those treatment steps, you can remove many, many pollutants from the water. So think about your organic matter, we can remove water color, bad smell and taste. Think about metals, minerals, we remove iron, manganese, leading to dissolved water. Algae bloom byproducts, think about bad smell and taste, and also alcohol toxins can be a health hazard. And as far as organic contaminants, pesticides, herbicides, and now the forever chemical PFAS, and we are ramping up for PFAS treatment, we're going to use activated carbon, so a big vessel full of activated carbon, and as the water flows, we activated carbon PFAS is going to be removed. That's all I have on water quality.
So inside those vessels, do you have like mess greens, filters, or how do you control the containment there, all the particles and stuff falling through those, I mean, as far as chemical cleaning?
So this is going to be full of activated carbon, and when the water flows through, chemicals are going to stick to the carbon. And after a while, when the activated carbon is full of, chemicals will replace it. So you have to replace your activated carbon on a regular basis. It can last a few months, sometimes up to a year. It's going to be based on what you have to remove and the concentration as well.
I was just wondering, like on a PM schedule, like six months or three months?
It depends on the site, and I'm going to give you an example for Hopewell, Virginia, so we do have this system. It's there for basically in case of a spill, and we replace every year, we're going to replace the GAC, the deactivated carbon. For PFAS, it could be more frequent.
Do you use activated carbon filtration in Bel Air?
No, it's regular enter site.
I was curious about what you do with the spent activated carbon once it's removed.
It's removed in landfill, it's going to go to a landfill.
That's what I figured.
We use to reactivate, so you take it, cook it, and once you cook it with acid, it's going to clean it and you can reuse it. But it is as expensive to get the new GAC versus reusing and re-cooking, so we just buy, buy and send to the landfill, I guess.
That's something that may be changing because of PFAS. And so I was on a call yesterday, and actually our procurement team and the engineering team is looking at a national contract for regeneration of the activated carbon as opposed to wasting it after the first use. That's going to be a challenge in the industry, I think, is having enough activated carbon available and enough firms that can reactivate it. So we're trying to get ahead of the game on that with a national contract with a supplier that guarantees us with enough to run all of our systems across the country before everybody gets in the game, right? And there's not enough to go around, but yeah, that might change, that, you know, the frequency is going to be stepped up with PFAS. You're going to have to replace it or regenerate it, reactivate it, I'm using the wrong term, reactivate it more often. Because of that, I think that there's going to be a push to look at the reactivation as opposed to just the virgin activated carbon.
And Barry points out, again, to reiterate, our ability to leverage nationally, right? We have national contracts, right, that cover the 740-some facilities we show that we own and operate. You know, Calgon Corporation, we have national contracts with them versus a town that has to worry about, you know, addressing this issue, right, and trying to be a player, right, going to buy maybe a, you know, a few thousand pounds of it, right, in a vessel. We've been this nationally, so we get national pricing every year on all our chemical products. So we're able to leverage that total buying power and kind of be a real prominent player in that space.
We're conducting a pilot study of one of our wells that has a high PFAS, and it's a Calgon system that we're using in there to determine not only how effective it'll be for that well blow, but also for redesign of our wellhouse to include the activated carbon operation system. And it's not a cheap.
Christina's shaking her head because we have something very similar going on for our wells in Bel Air right now.
Any other questions for Christian?
I'm sorry, just, are you here with any information that eventually wastewater will have to be treated, tested and treated for PFAS?
I guess it depends on the states. I know, I live on the Virginia side, and we are talking about it now. Well, next permit, maybe, we could see a PFAS monitoring. American Water already started monitoring PFAS in wastewater, so we are already sending samples to central lab in Illinois, so we are already doing some research on it.
There's actually a bill that's.
The treatment plant, it goes through, of course, a sand filter, and then the UV system for difficult discharge, and that would be a point you'd pull to see if the analysis determined if you have PFAS in there. And we're not, I don't think we're required to do that now.
No.
I'm sure you're aware, but there's actually some legislation we've been monitoring in Maryland, that's some in hearing this week about PFAS, and touching on some of the industrial users of wastewater systems and what the rules are going to be pertaining to them. So we're watching those and commenting on those along with other people, and then, yeah, it's going to be coming on the wastewater side, it's just going to be a few years behind the water side.
Mayor, may I just have another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
You just said it, industrial users. Do you administer industrial users for your customers, or is that something that they do themselves? Industrial user permits, breweries.
We have tariffs that force them to do the pre-treatment and have specifications about how they do it. We don't actually do the work on their side to do the pre-treatment, if that makes sense.
It does.
We do, we do have systems throughout our 14 states that have a industrial pre-treatment program, right? We administer that, so.
We do, and that's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, we have access to resources, actually, you know, before I came to Virginia, I was in charge of 60 MGB, million gallon per day wastewater plant that had an ITP program. So we have the knowledge and expertise if we were to administer something that, you know, that type of program.
And what about our wells? We have five wells, I believe that three would be drawn from right now. You take everything over? I mean, hold it. How would you look into maybe being allowed to draw more water, like to, versus, you know, I think, oh, I'm sorry, I can hear me. I'm sorry, sorry about that. Could you hear my voice? Yeah, I was curious about the wells and whether or not you would help us procure, you know.
Withdraw from.
Yeah, more draw from MBE, you know.
If additional allocation is necessary, work with the local agencies to get the permits to increase the withdrawals. Now, it does have a lot to do with aquifers and whether that's allowable, but we do do that work in all of our areas. So as there's growth developed, we make sure that there's sufficient water to meet growth needs.
I think there was, when we met the one day, I think there was some discussion about the, we're into potomac aquifer, and I think that in Virginia, they're not allowing any more drawing out of potomac aquifer, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, and we have one side using the potomac aquifer, and we cannot, we draw more, so we started a study to look at other aquifers to see if we can get water from other layers, I guess, from the ground. So we started the process.
But in the meantime, I mean, real life, you know, we can share going to that specific example, but when we took over the system, you know, per se, you talked about non-revenue water, right, and tracking where the water's going, you know, a system that we took over, you know, didn't have a lot of emphasis on that. You know, they were, they were drawing 10 to 11 million gallons a month. Within probably the first three, four months, we fixed over 100 leaks, and then that, you know, that was down to about eight and a half million gallons a month, which was below the allocation permit, so, you know, talk about making, we didn't have to make a capital investment for this community, right? We were able to do what we do best, you know, naturally, you know, allow us to do the study in the future for future growth, but, you know, it's not all about getting more water right off the bat, right? It's planning it over a five, 10-year life period, but addressing the real issues inside the system. And then, you know, by doing that, you know, we've allowed even organic growth in this community that would have never been able to, you know, already, right, without making any, really, any investment except for fixing leaks, right? So just all about the approach and operations.
Has your company done any research so far into our aquifer and the availability?
Around here, no.
Nothing yet.
We do, at our corporate office, have more than one hydrologist who does work for us and helps us prepare the documentation necessary to submit for, you know, increases or seeking out alternative water sources.
I think Christina brings up a good point, and we'll go back to Bel Air. Similar situation with Bel Air, what happens when Winter's Run falls below the required flow line to meet our allocation permit? We had to find a solution to that. Our solution there was not increase the well capacity, it was to put in the impoundment. So we put in a 90 million gallon reservoir, so.
The vents next slide.
Yeah, vents next slide.
Timing's perfect.
I'm sorry.
Top of the quarter.
See, I was leading into that.
But we were looking for, to Christina's point, alternative solutions, and she's going to speak to that.
So I get the pretty pictures, and I'm very proud. I'm going to tell you, these are my babies. This is what we do here in, you know, in the engineering department, this is the stuff we're most proud of. First one we talked a little bit about was the impoundment, and the impoundment is an EPA national workending project for its community impact. This is a 90 million gallon offshore is what they call it, or off-site storage of water. As Jeff alluded to, this allows us to draw water off of Winter's Run when the flows in the river are high. We fill up the impoundment, and it allows for if Winter's Run goes dry or low during a drought, we have 90 million gallons, which is more than 90 days' supply for this community, so that they can stay in water at the time. It also allows the community to have the insurance necessary to be able to do development. And it's, this is an example of how, there's many ways to address your water issue. Getting more water is not always just coming out of the wellhead, there's so many different options for us, and, you know, we use all of the tools and the toolbars. We strategize and we go after the leaks, we go after alternative solutions, and we also go after new sources. So that's an example of that project.
How many acres is the impoundment?
I think it's about 12 acres of water, and it's sitting on about 30 acres of land.
Kind of like in a park.
Of course it does.
It's about 60 feet deep at the center, 55, 60 feet deep.
And it's how deep?
About 55, 60 feet deep at the center.
And it's 90 million gallons of water, so for a community this size, it would be very significant. So that's one project. Talked already a little bit about main replacement, so this is a project here, North Hickory Avenue in Bel Air. This, we were replacing some pipe that was from like 1890s, it was four-inch main, we upsized it to 12, right down, right down the road there. We are always looking to do main replacement, you know, we try to target about 1% of your miles of pipe annuling in replacement. Sometimes you get a little higher, sometimes. Sometimes you get a little higher, sometimes you get a little lower, depending on where our capital investment's going, make choices. But that's our, that's our target, and you can see there, you know, just wanna point out a little note there. You see that we wrap all of our pipe in polyurethane to protect it from the soil corrosions. So, you know, people wanna know why you have main breaks, it's not often the pipe, it's not often the water trying to get out, it's the soil trying to get in. It corrodes the outsides of the pipes, it comes in and out, comes in after the pipe, so...
Do you use ductile iron pipe?
Yes, yes, in most cases. There are times where other types of pipe are more appropriate, depending on the acidity of the soil or the location. But as a whole, we try to use ductile iron pipe in most of our cases.
Do we use Plas52? Do we wrap it like that? Do we wrap our pipe?
I have, no, I don't think so. We use ductile iron as Potuminous coated.
Right, and this adds an extra, this adds an extra layer of protection.
We don't do that, it's not in our...
All right, moving on, we talked a little bit about wellhouses, and you mentioned a project. This is a brand-new well that we installed in our, we call our Eastern Shore, which is the edge of the eastern area of Virginia. We have about 37 well systems there, and that's a brand-new wellhouse we built there. It's got the wellhead in it, we have a gen set there, a 5,000-gallon storage tank, and brand-new, brand-new location for this, for this community. And that's something that we, we have the ability to deliver that completely in-house. We use contractors to do the work, but we are managing the whole project. All right, moving along, we talked a little bit about Hope Well. So last project there is a new sedimentation basin we're building in Hope Well. Using new technology, using plate settlers, if you're familiar with plate settlers.
Tell us what that is.
All right, so plate settlers are, imagine sheets of stainless steel packed very tightly together, and then they're on an incline, and I can't do the Stokes Engineering Physics of this, but I'll try to avoid that for you. But it allows it to settle more quickly, but that's the whole purpose of it. The particle matter makes contact with stainless steel, falls to the bottom of the basin very quickly, and it allows you to settle out more water than direct gravity in a smaller footprint space. So that's, we're putting a second facility in our Hopa, Hopa foot plant for redundancy. That's the importance here. We wanna make sure that we always have the ability to take something out of service, do maintenance or things like that, without having an interruption of service to our customers.
Christina, just a quick footnote on the footprint of that. At eight, that particular basin, 18 million gallons per day, probably would, about the size of this room. So just figure treating 18 million gallons of water a day through the sedimentation basin in a footprint about the size of this room. So that's, to give you a perspective.
You're processing surface water there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause you wouldn't do that...
It would need it on a well.
Surface water.
Surface water.
But this is, this is, when you have storms, is it, what's, what's the purpose of cleaning out the sediment?
So turbidity is naturally forming in river water, it's coming up from the bed. Storms, what we call your turbidity derives. So this is the first step in settling process.
We don't even run our plant if it's, if the storm is so bad and helping...
You just shut down and live off, live off of your storage system until the turbidity drops back down in the river?
I think that's what we do, don't we, in most cases?
We do two things, we have, we can get a million gallons a day from Artesian, so we have an impact with them to supplement our treatment plant and well system rather.
Relative to the impoundment, that is also another option for our weight, for our water plant operators. When we, when we have a storm and the turbidity rises in Winter's Run, we have the option to switch to the impoundment and cool water that's less turbid, so we can continue to produce the revenue produced during a storm. And sometimes they blend, sometimes you can, we have the option, you can blend the creek water and the impoundment water for treatment reasons. And then, as the turbidity drops back down after a storm, then they're able to filter back from the impoundment back onto the river water. So it's, that was not always the case for all the operators in Maryland, when they were just working on the stream, and they're trying to treat, you know, turbidity of, you know, 600 and 700.
Where did you find 12 acres of water and 3 acres of land in Bel Air?
Actually, it's a good question, I'll answer it. Jenna might know, he's been there as long as me. Very, very, I have never been part of a project that was more supported by all levels of government and the company. So we got it from the county. The county owned about 65 acres, and we're in the process of selling some of the land back. They're gonna build a park on a historic home, a stead that was there, it's called Mount Soma. And, and so the county recognized the importance of the water supply. It's right across the, the River Winter's Run from our plant, so we bought the land from the county. We're gonna give them back, or sell back to them, I guess, if you will, the land that we didn't need for the impoundment and future plant site. But, but it was remarkable, that project, to see the county, the city, the company, even the naysayers, right? You know, the, the people that are worried about certain bugs and animals and plants. We made everything very transparent and available online, all the studies we had to do. That's the first earth embankment dam, they call it a dam because the water is held in there by North Embankment in Maryland in 30 years. And we got the permit in less than a year. So MBE issued that permit in 10 months. And, and that was because of the cooperation of all those parties I mentioned, including the state. Very proud of that project, never seen a more inclusive group of agencies work together to accomplish a project of such importance to the community. So that's a long answer to where we got the land, we got it from the county.
I was just wondering about a breach of that embankment, what would happen?
Well, we had to study that, go ahead Christina.
Yeah, we have, actually, we do, we have to study that, and we actually have a, an emergency response plan that we, that we review annually, that, that talks about how we'll deal with it. It, it talks about our inspection, what types of inspections, how often we do inspections, where we record all of our inspections of the dam. We are very fortunate in American Water, can I say, we have a dam engineer on our team, and that's what he does. And he was very, in the, in the, in the heart of this project and helped us get this, he takes care of a lot of people. We do have a lot of dams in American Waters, particularly in Pennsylvania, upper Pennsylvania area. And so it's important, you know, as I said, we have a hydrologist on, we have a dam engineer, we need one when you have these numbers of assets, make sure that you're maintaining them correctly, inspecting them correctly, and, and, you know, doing the repairs necessary to get the full length of life out of the dams.
One of the, it's actually regulated by MBE, I mean, so we have to be compliant with MBE on the inspection of that facility. One of the reasons it won awards, that helps it in terms of its, limits the opportunity for leaks, it's, it's got a special liner, it's just the second time, I think, in the United States it was used. It was, came from a company in France, the special liner that lines that basin to keep the water from leaking out, but also is safe if somebody were to get in, and it's got a little bit of grip to it, almost like a tumulus roof, so you can walk up the, walk up the liner and get out of the water, right? That sounds overly simplified, but if it were a slippery-type plastic slope, you wouldn't, you wouldn't really get free of the water. You couldn't get out if you got in somehow. And so we're very proud of that, that liner covers the entire impoundment and is, is secured around the top in a concrete wall. And then on that, if we were to need to increase the capacity of that impoundment for future growth, we can actually build a parapet wall of concrete that would raise the, the level of the water and allow us to get about 15% more capacity in the pond.
Very good.
Just a couple more here on the bottom row. Just, this is a pump station that we have in, in Bel Air. We, we value the importance of having the ability to have generated power when you lose power. Water is, you know, essential for health and safety, so we make sure that many of our locations, or as many locations as possible, will have onsite generation so that we can create power when necessary. So that's a project that was done in Bel Air. We spoke a little bit about wastewater, so we operate, as Barry said, two wastewater plants, 5 MGBs, in our Dale City area. These are some chemical clarifiers where we replaced the tanks, brought them all the way down to their foundation, brought in a contractor, did steel tanks, all new mechanisms. And, you know, for us, the performance out of the new tanks has made a big impact on the wastewater side. You go from your chemical clarifier onto your filters, and we've been able to extend our filter runs because replacing the clarifiers has been able to improve the water quality going on to our filters. So that's one other project we have. Another area that is of interest, that, you know, often is not looked at in the water industry, is making sure that your switchgear is up to speed, is clean, is maintained. This is a project where we actually replace some switchgear in Hope Well. For many people who have had plants that were built in the 50s or in the 40s, switchgear's gonna become a problem, getting spare parts for switchgear. Switchgear is moving to a more electronic process, so that's part of why these projects are so important, is that you'll be able to maintain your switchgear going forward. For those that don't know, your switchgear is what, sorry, your switchgear is what allows you to run your pumps. The larger your pumps are, the more you have to have power protection on them so that they can run effectively. Your VFDs may be in your switchgear as well, and your ability to shut on and off. Think of it as similar to you break the box in your basement, except not true. And then last is an elevated tank that we are just wrapping up now in Hopa as well. This is a 2.5-million-gallon storage tank in Hopa. It more than doubles the storage that we had in that community. And that is a new type of composite tank, if anyone's familiar with tank types. That's a concrete pedestal with a metal tank on the top. And that's a project that's just wrapping up now. Any questions about capital, capital projects, anything of that nature?
No, listen, thank you so much for this, this is, so far, so good.
I think we're down to our last couple slides, are you guys okay on time?
Yeah, we're good.
Your questions have been great, so we've got a little...
This is important to us.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap up with our focus on community partnerships, you know, one of, probably, this is definitely my favorite slide.
Go ahead. The 2.5 gallons you have, 1 billion gallons you have in the air? How many mixers do you have in that tank to keep your residual chlorine on?
So that tank will have a Solubion, we're gonna have, I think it's total three Solubions.
Okay, the circulation, okay.
But we'll move, we'll move through a lot more water, that's a, that's a, that system uses about 18 MGB or so.
On average, it's probably 10, but that tank's a little unique, it's right on the plant site.
It's actually large.
So the water go in and go out, and, and it will manage the turnover very closely.
We could say have a big exchange there.
Right.
We, we also, we also designed an automatic valve as well, so our operators have flexibility where they can turn over tanks, so they can actually, you know, we can shut one down.
Oh, that's fire flow, I imagine, too, in that tank.
Yeah, there's also added fire flow for the community, too, yeah. Yeah, but this particular one, we'll be able to, you know, we can shut down tanks from, from the touch point of a computer. You know, we can, we can open valves.
Here are computers, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Good question.
All right, I know all these slides were wonderful, this slide is probably my favorite because it really demonstrates our focus on community partnerships. You know, one of my favorite things about being within the American Water footprint, all of the opportunities the local communities and organizations get to receive funding for, for local projects. A couple I wanna talk about here are the one in the middle, which is our Chesapeake Century Plaza that was built up by John Carroll Private School, if you know where that is in Bel Air. And what that is, is it's a 60-foot channel, you can kinda see, but, these are my kids, by the way. I'm, I'm, I live in Bel Air, so, you know, from a personal standpoint, I can, I can tell you that these projects, you know, they mean a lot to the community. So what this is, is a 60-foot channel, and if you, if you stand back and look at it, it's sort of like a 30,000-foot view of the Chesapeake Bay watershed. So along that channel, if you kinda look hard, you can see there's little diverters back there, you can drop little ramps and divert the water around, and so it's, it's as much education as it is fun. It's sort of like a, like a little water play place. And I'll, and I'll tell you, in the summertime, this place is packed with kids about my son's age. And it's just, in another month or so, the, the social media in Bel Air will be, will be hopping with questions of when they're gonna turn the water on at the Chesapeake Plaza. And, and so through our American Water charitable foundation, we were able to donate $25,000 to help make that project happen. And so it's something that we were very proud of, it was, we actually opened it right after I took over as office manager. You know, being a resident and being in the town and working, and living and working and playing in, in the same area. And so I take a lot of pride in, in the projects we're, we're able to help out. The other one I wanna point out here is, is the Shamrock Park refurbish. And so Shamrock Park was your basic playground, probably, I guess it was built in the 70s. It was old, and it needed refurbished. So the town reached out to us to see if we had any funding available. And one of the, sort of one of the details to that, that project that really sort of hit home with me and really made me wanna help the community is, is along with purchasing new equipment for this playground, the part of the plan was to make a completely wheelchair accessible. So that means all the equipment, the servicing of the area the playground is actually on, we donated $25,000, and it, so that's like a very hard rubber surface, kind of little sponge to it. And you can't see because this picture's taken far away, but there were a lot of big smiles when we took that picture because when you got there and you saw the impact of a new playground and the upgrades to the facilities, everybody was really happy, and it's something I was very proud to be a part of. In the 16 years I've been with American Water, I've seen donations ranging from $500 to $25,000. So it's something that we really love doing, and it is sort of a demonstration of American Water's commitment to the communities that we work in. You know, we wanna make those communities better to work in, to live in, and play in, especially play in. So that's all I have on this slide, and I will just advance the slide here since I've been driving it. That's a picture of our Maryland team, and we'd be glad to answer any questions, and I'll take advantage of, thank you guys for having us here today.
Well, listen, it was, the presentation was fantastic, I think it's something that we, we need to digest and understand a little bit. And I don't think there's, I've kinda thrown my feelings out there to the board a couple different times, that I think, I tend to believe that the water and wastewater is bigger than us or is getting bigger than what the town can really handle. And I think that educating ourselves to our options is very important to us. And you guys did a great job of bringing that on. We currently have a person that operates a, a very good partner, and then from our, who's operating our plants, both plants today. We're under contract for a handful more years, I'm gonna say. And we have a partner in Artesian Water with the interconnects that we have. And everyone's important to us, and, but we need to learn more. I'm, I'm worried to death about the PFAS. I just think that, I know it's gonna happen, that we're gonna have to clean the wastewater with one of those units. And we talked about, you mentioned, could you take it to the landfill? I don't think they're gonna allow you to take it to the landfill because it's gonna bleed right back into our water system somehow. So I don't know where it's gonna be stored at, or how it's gonna be destroyed, but currently I think that's above what we know or understand at this point. And that's what we're trying to understand a little bit more. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments?
You know, I had several during the presentation, but you guys answered them as best as they were coming to my mind. It was a very well-presented project, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, I'm very proud of the team that we have, and I think you saw their passion for, for what they do. And it's been a pleasure to meet you all and have the opportunity to tell you a little bit about what we do.
Listen, I, I really appreciate it. Staff, anyone here have any other comments, questions?
I'd like to make a comment, I think you guys did a fantastic job. And compliment every one of you and your company for, it was a great presentation today.
Coming from Louis?
Louis, we share your passion, right? No, we really are, I mean, we're all passionate about what we do. My wife just recently asked me, six months ago, you know, back in my day, I might want to admit, a professional, whatever, baseball, football player. She said, "If you had one thing to do, what would you do?" Exactly what I'm doing now. I mean, it's, we're, we're a different breed, but we love what we do.
Thing of the face of the earth, let me tell you.
We love, we love what we do, and we love to do it for the customer and the town. Like I said, we show up, you know, whether it's, you know, picking up trash in your main street, you know, we'll be there. You know, we're passionate, and a lot of times our families, I have a seven and nine-year-old, they'll be picking trash right up in the, in the main street at Elkton, you know, if you, if, if we know about it, right? And we'll be there with you, so we're a partner.
Well, listen, thank you so much, and we'll be in touch, absolutely, thank you. And, you know, I'm gonna interrupt the meeting a little bit, and I'd like to bypass Louis's report. Let's go to Pastor Kevin Brown if we could. I'm gonna, is that okay, Kevin? Hello, Kevin?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, hi. Hi, hi. I apologize for having you on there for an hour, but we'd like to hear from you.
It just shows that the town is still working hard.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
So before you say this, Pastor Brown, just wanted to say, I congratulate Pastor Brown, Commissioner Givens. Some people may not have noticed, but we were on WJZ last night, the TV channel for the news. They gave a little report on the Elton Color School and the project that's being enhanced right now. So I gave a phone call to Pastor Brown and told him how excited I was to see him on TV. I heard his voice several times this week. And I was working around the room and I kept saying, that voice sounds for me. I looked on TV and I saw his face and I said, I was my ask Commissioner Givens about it. Finally, me and Rob Alt were sitting, watching TV, and Eric Charlie Givens showed up on TV on the Channel 6 news. So I just want to say, it was a pleasure to look and see Elton being put on the map, basically because of the project being done. And then from saying that, again, I compliment Givens and Pastor Brown for initiating this project because it really means a lot to me as a town citizen. So I'm going to turn the floor over to him and tell him the reason why it's on the view.
Well, thank you so much. First of all, to all of the commissioners and to the mayor. First of all, you know, this project goes back a long way. And it would not have been successful at this point if it wasn't for you all. And so we thank you for the continued support of this project. This project is just not a project in the community. It's a community project. And it is to better all of us. And so again, Mr. Mayor knows that many years ago, we talked about that this project would make national news and would get national attention. And everything, timing is crucial. And so this is our season. And we're grateful that CBS picked this project up and has put it on the national platform. Just so that you know, as of yesterday, as of yesterday, when this aired, people around the country has been sending in donations.
Wow.
Aired nationally. And so we are grateful for WJT television. We're grateful that they came up and did an extensive interview and went through the, went through the building. Just to give you an update, we are now in our third round of congressional funding. And so Senators Van Hollen and Carr really want to get money into Cecil County. They have shared that with me, that they have not as of yet been able to get money into Cecil County. And that's what they really want to do, is to get $5 million into Cecil County. And so we are in the application process right now for congressional funds. And we solicit your prayers. But we not only solicit your prayers, money attracts money. And so we would like for the town of Elton as well to source speed of at least $250,000 into this project. All right, that's what my ask is. It could be lower, but I'm going to ask time. And because again, this project will benefit all of us as we continue to work on this project. We have one of the best architects, Mr. Dale Green. You've heard him speak. Right now, he is currently working on the Billgood Marshall School in Baltimore. He has that contract. And we'll be bringing up mahogany contractors who's working on the Billgood Marshall School to come in and to, to begin to do what they call special demolition, which is to scale back the building. That's the warehouse and the school because we have to date selective demolition, because we have to date the warehouse and the school because the warehouse also has historic significance as well. And again, I'm going to shut up. If there's any questions that you want to ask of me, but we are certainly moving forward. You may not hear the hammers binding or nails, but we, our board, Brother Givens and Reverend Ricardo Burns, who is the pastor of Light Church, and Reverend Burne Bannell, and Mr. Thomas Jones, who is a CPA right here in, in the town, they are part of our board. And so we continuously do our work. The story, we reached out to WJT Television, and the story is on their, on their website, that the town wants to download it. The full story is on their website. And so we're thankful, we're grateful for all that you have done. And certainly, Mr. Mayor and the commissioners, this could not have been made possible if we were not a team working together. And so again, we are so grateful for what you continue to do. And again, we need to, we need the support.
I would ask that you put it in writing for us. It is budget season. So if you could get that in writing to us, that'd be fantastic. Because it is a worthwhile project and it's, we've had many discussions about it. And there's no question that this is, could be one of the most important projects we have going on.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Anyone have any?
I'm not mad at you, Mr. Mayor, for not answering, not calling me back.
Okay, thank you. Would Pastor Burns like to say anything?
Well, good afternoon. And certainly, I want to thank the mayor and to all of the town commissioners and to the town administrator for your support of this project. And also for welcoming me back to Cecil County to write to any church. And we look forward to continuing our partnership with the town, with the community. I believe that this project has an opportunity to grow our visibility throughout the nation in terms of tourist dollars and tourism. So thank you. And again, Mr. Mayor, we thank you for your kind words and your, the support. And we certainly get that budget information to you.
Thank you so much.
And I just want to say, I didn't clarify for sure, WJZ, I noticed that it was on at 9 o'clock. That's when I called Pastor Reverend Brown. But I'm not sure whether it's going to show again at 11 o'clock news. It might air the rest of the week. I'm not sure. I never did check into that. But I think if you look at your TV and look at the news, they probably will show it again because I started it again at 9 o'clock this morning. So thanks again. Givens, would you like to say anything?
I don't have anything to say. I think my compadres have already said what needs to be said. Certainly, I remember when Rob and the group of us met together to come up with the final transaction. And you said, and Reverend Burns had said the same thing, it could be a national attraction once this is completed. And again, thank everyone on this board for what they have done, including Louis, George, our administrator, who also was present at that initial meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, Lou, you're on.
Just have a couple things. First is Resolution R1-2024. There's two vehicles. We want to dispose of 2008 Ford F-250 and a 2084 550 pickup, 16-year-old vehicles. And we want to tell them that Richie Brothers. So we need the board to authorize the declaration of these vehicles are surplus and that they're subject to sale. And the income will come back to the general fund.
We have a motion to accept Resolution R1, R01-2024, disposal of surplus property.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on this? Hearing and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The Part II, I would just discuss at the workshop. And I think the board was in favor of it. The statute of policies were unassigned, unbalanced, and building reserve over time, beginning in fiscal '25. And a copy of this was obviously distributed to the board for consideration. And of course, it was discussed at the meeting at the workshop. So I would recommend the board adopt Resolution R2-2024 for, for the town.
So we have a motion to accept Resolution R2-2024.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? So the point I wanted to get across here, currently the town of Elton doesn't have any type of policy that says how much we should have in a reserve for a general fund. And that's one of those catchy things. I think when you look at the county government, what's happening right now, they're talking about how much in dollars the county has in surplus dollars. And you have different, different opinion of whether it's too much, too little, whatever it may be, how it should be used. And I think that the town of Elton should put together some type of policy. And quite frankly, it's a small policy. The amount would be not less than 5% of the general fund revenues for any fiscal year. We'll do our best to maintain a 5% number of that in reserve. And not to say that it won't be used during the calendar year, but it wants, we want to make sure it's backed by the following calendar year. Make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to do this on the water fund and the sewer fund also, and even the major facility fund. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I had not prepared for building reserve in the water and sewer funds, which would affect the rates for those funds.
Yeah, I think in the future, we need to get one.
Reserve that, that would be beyond capital and operating costs. So you had asked the Davenport to look into that.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll see what they, how they come back.
That is correct.
Okay, Resolution R3, Senator's Board. Basically, this provides a accrued vacation distribution to department managers for the severance appointment with the town. And the allegation, or the allocation of the accrued distribution is based on the years of service applied in '15, '16, '17, '18, '19, '20, '21, '22, and '23 years. And essentially, right now, all employees are subject to a maximum of 192 vacation hours, no matter how many hours they approve. That's the limit. But the department managers, I would recommend deviation from that norm and allow for this policy to be effective, to allow for additional hours that they approve over time, be distributed upon their severance from the town's employment.
I agree. So Resolution R3-2024, do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second. Any discussion? The only discussion I would have, Lou, on this would be, we have it down as low as the five years of service. But I, I don't know if there'd be a department manager that would only be five years of service. Do you think that could be struck, struck, or what was our thing to the board?
Yeah, what's, I'm just. Typically, you don't have managers that long. But I'm thinking about the future. I mean, we may.
And it does make sense. And I can tell you, our managers work a lot of hours over and they're most of them, everyone's on salary. So I don't have a, I really don't have a problem with it. It was just more of a comment.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lou, did anyone?
All right. Okay, that's, that's the item tab on my agenda. So what do you think? I sent a thing to the board. I forgot to mention that on February 7th, we were 202 years old. So I sent that to the board. Should have brought that up at the seventh meeting.
Our birthday. We should have had the big birthday cake out here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know. I slipped on that when I forgot it was our birthday, 202 years.
Every couple hundred years.
Only made 63 of them. Made 63 of them. Okay, let's see. Reappointment of planning commission, we have Mr. Will Muller. His term is up. I'd like to get the support of the board to reappoint him. His term would be from March 31st, 2024 through February 28th, 2029. We have a motion to approve Mr. Will Muller.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about Mr. Muller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's see. We have, we've had a lot going on here in the last several weeks. But one of the things that we were back and forth on, and I spoke to Commissioner Piner a little bit yesterday on it again, is he brought up about the major facility fees over at the, for the, I'm going to say, in general, on a apartment complex. And I dove into it a little bit, probably not as much as I should at this point, but I'd like to dig into it a little bit more. But I think a good compromise would be, currently in the town of Elton, we have, I think we have one apartment complex across the street. We have one on High Street. We had Pine Valley. So I think we've had three apartment complexes that have, that have been in the town. And now we're looking at possibly a fourth and a fifth project. And I go back and forth, as I've told the board, I feel like that special taxing district, in my view, I think we've been double dipping and so forth. Maybe we're not, but that's kind of how I feel. But I think something that could resolve all of our concerns is if we treat an apartment complex like how we treat a hotel. So when a hotel goes up, if it's a, there's a, they're charged by the fixture, not so much by the room. And I think that that would make it more tolerable to me anyhow. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels with that.
Well, how?
And I don't have the numbers. That's the.
I was going to say.
I don't have those numbers to know what the difference is between the fees on, as it sits today, compared to a hotel. But I know that we have a lot more hotels than we have apartment complexes. So that must tell me that there's a reason, there could be a reason behind that. I don't know if, what I don't know, what I haven't investigated, was, did we relax facility fees across the street, or did we relax on Long Island Street? I don't know if we did. That's something I'd like to find out a little bit more on because I wasn't on the board at that point. Do you guys remember?
I don't remember.
Here, Jean Miller.
Hey, Jean?
I could provide you with a list of the apartment complex and number of units for the town of Elton. We have quite a few of them. If you want, I can read the list.
Yeah, are they over 101 building?
Over 101 building.
Yeah. So what my proposal would be, was that when you would have 100 units, just sit very similar to a hotel, then we would charge appropriately as we would, we would charge a hotel. So that would.
Apartments have kitchen facilities that hotel rooms don't.
What kind of facilities?
Kitchen.
Facilities.
Yeah, I thought Chip said it would be very difficult to determine that number because of the different sized apartments.
He did say that.
Different bathrooms, that it could be very complicated. But I just recall that much.
And he did. And we haven't, we haven't followed up to, I haven't followed up to find out exactly what those numbers would be. I'm bringing this up because my fellow commissioner had asked me to bring it up again. So I would, I would like to ask the board, do you want me to do a little bit more research and bring that data to the board? Or is it, is there any movement here or no movement?
Well, it'd be nice to know. And right now, we bring it aboard, so I assume that we're going to come to some type of conclusion. So if Jean Miller is willing to assist in whatever endeavor, I'm quite sure we would like to know that information as well as read it for ourselves.
Yes. Are you okay with that, Earl? Okay. So what we're going to do is, I'd like to, one, I'd like to find out what the cost was, what we charged. the cost was, what we charged, the, the, I guess what my proposal would be, so that we're very clear, it would be that any apartment complex over 100 units would be charged the same as a hotel. So, if we have an apartment complex that came in as 30 units, 40 units, 50 units, 60 units, 70 units, 80 units, they would still fall under the residential major facility numbers. But if it comes in over 100 units, is where I'm trying to differentiate, differentiate the difference. So, I'll gather up that information, I'll work with Jean, I'll work with Chip when he gets back, and I'll have more information for the board. If that makes any sense.
It does.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm always open to more information, for sure. I just, I'm trying to comprehend why we're separating the number of units. What's the purpose? Is the purpose to do this for one project, or all future projects?
My thinking is that we've got a couple projects within the bud that could possibly be well over 100 units. We have, I think, one other, one other on Delancy Road that may come up, but I'm not exactly sure how many units that would be. And I'm not trying to differentiate one from the other, but I'm just trying to, there has to be a reason why we don't have more people coming in front of us for apartment Larger units. Now, I don't know if that's good, bad, or different. I don't know how the board feels about it, maybe, maybe we didn't want any additional.
I don't know, I don't know. Jean, while you're doing your research, can you just let us know what maybe some of our neighboring municipalities are doing when it comes to apartments?
Sure.
And I'll help you, I'll help you, Jean.
The list that we have, we've got well over 1,000 apartments in the town, and.
How many of them are over 100 units?
You've got Elk Chase, Glen Creek, Huron Quest, the Meadows at Elk Creek, Pine Valley, and there's one more.
And how many are enclosed in one facility, one building? I guess there'd be none, really.
No, I don't know that that was something that, you know, it depends on the site.
Yeah.
A topo for the site, and sort of the developer's vision as to how he would like that to look, you know, the appearance and the aesthetics of the, of the complex.
Yeah, that'd be good. I'd like to get that list, and I'd just like to track that down a little bit. Okay.
Can I ask you a question? John, would we, I mean, would we possibly, in kind of our problem, was a developer who wanted to put in 99 apartments versus one that's doing 100? I mean, is, do you, if, or do we just have to have very specific reasonings for having different formulas?
I think we have a reason, a reasonable reason.
A reasonable reason.
Yeah, I, I think you may drive developers to 99. 99 is going to become a magic number, maybe.
Just curious.
Let me, let me think about that, and I'll report back.
Thanks.
Well, listen, I'll get more information for the board, but I just wanted to bring it up, that, for Commissioner Piner, we're working on it.
I'm just asking, if I've seen with the hotels and stuff, I just thought, yeah, so, something up there.
I kind of think it should be treated as a hotel, but listen, we'll work, we'll worry about that.
Like a workshop on that?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, Commissioners report. Commissioner Vasmiato.
I don't really have anything this week. I would like to commend Margie for a great job downtown with your Winter Lights Parade, that was very nice. I'm sure that'll grow in the coming years.
That's the plan.
Commissioner Piner?
Aye. Said YSA heard you quick. I congratulate you, I PSC on Facebook. I was in the poker number, I was trying to get banned.
I saw, I saw the team walking down the street. Commissioner Givens?
Hi, Earl Piner. Congratulations again, Margie. I saw, I was at a basketball game, but I saw some emphasis of what you all did downtown. It was very pretty, I'm sorry it wasn't there, particularly the background, the lights against darkness, and congratulations for what efforts you put forth, and whatever you try to do in the future as a team. Steve Howe is the, your department making up with the absence of one of your employees, of, of one of the employees.
We're struggling, we're, we're, we're less than.
Yeah, because after signing checks, I was turning the checks in, there's an awful lot of work that goes into your apartment, you know, from receiving bills, and writing up checks, and scanning them, and putting them in different places, and they, they have got a lot of work to do, but if they've hung in thus far, that's good. But I guess moving forward, I would think that you may have to change direction for whatever reason that's going to benefit you all, and also the town of Elton as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner?
Um, now, only Margie had, that was a good event, and I was there. I know you were.
Yeah, it was great. Looking forward to seeing it grow.
Thank you.
Is this the time of the meeting? We open up the floor for anyone to have anything to say for the good of the town of Elton. Margie, come on down.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. The Winter Light Parade turned out to be a wonderful event, the feedback has been very positive. I wanted to change, thank Chief Rogers, her husband and her dogs for coming down and managing that little extra bit of traffic that we couldn't control. So, I thank you very much for that, and especially to Elton Parks and Rec dancers who came down, and without them, it, it would have been a much more quiet parade. They, it's so much fun. Next year, we're hoping to get organizations involved so we can grow the parade, so look forward to doing that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted, I just wanted to reiterate what Margie said about the Department of Parks and Recs, and Earl, please tell Mary what a wonderful job they did. They really helped make the dream.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the Zoom meeting have anything to say for the good of the town? All right, so, I'd like to, I'd like to, we're going to have a, we're going to have a closed meeting to meet with personnel, and we will not reconvene, so can I have a motion to have a closed meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
In a second, any discussion? It's for number one, discuss, blah, 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 every other personnel matter. All right. We will not reconvene. And I'd like to have Cindy to stay into the room, and Michelle and Lois.
We're all happy.
World for two.
Ending the meeting. I'm ending the meeting.
Yes, meeting's ended.
Love.